The March 23rd City Council meeting for the city of Weatherford. Before we call the meeting to order, we're going to invite Steve Bryant up from Brownstone Church. Steve is going to lead us in the invocation. Steve, thank you for joining us.
Thank you. Shall we pray? Lord, we're humbled by your goodness to us. We're thankful for the opportunity that we have to live in such a wonderful city as Weatherford. I thank you for the men and women who serve in these chambers tonight, and I pray that you would give wisdom to them in every area that they are covering tonight. I pray that you would give understanding of the issues, and I pray you'd bless them and their families at this time. We ask this in Jesus now. Amen.
Thank you for being here, sir. This time, I will call the meeting to order and announce we do have a quorum present. That was item two on our agenda. Item three is pledges of allegiance to the United States and Texas flags. That'll be led this evening by Mayor Pro Tem Wilder.
Please join me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state under God, one indivisible.
Well done. Item four on the agenda is items of community interest. Mr. Hotop.
Just one. So this past weekend, we actually, our Parks Department hosted a barnyard cook-off, which is a state championship barbecue cook-off down at Harridge Park this past weekend. So we had over thirty-seven people that were down there cooking in four categories, and there was a total payout of over $12,000, which is a huge payout for barbecue competitions. It was a really cool event, a lot of good barbecue cooked, and so they host that annually, and so we'll look forward to that next year.
Sounds great. Thanks for that information. Counsel, anything from y'all? Items of community interest? We'll move on to item five, which is presentations and proclamation. Counsel, we have five A, B, and C. I'd like to cover five A and five C first, and then go down for five B, excuse me if that's okay with y'all. Five A is presentation by Weatherford Little League regarding their upcoming opening ceremony, which is this Saturday. Do we have any Little League representatives here? Come on up! Let's play ball!
Play ball!
I love it.
I'm Tracy Louden, and when I get excited, I talk really loud. I really don't need a microphone.
That's all right, Tracy.
Anyway, I'm Tracy Louden. I'm the treasurer for Weatherford Little League. Matt is actually one of the coaches under my direction this season, and I've had James on, one of my coaches as well.
Boy, shoot.
Yeah, it's a challenge, I'm gonna tell ya. I have been on our Little League board for five years now. My child started when he was five, and he's now fourteen, and he has just, he's in love with baseball. I think youth sports are extremely important, especially this season after not having the spring season last year with the lovely COVID that went around. So thank y'all for letting me have a few minutes to talk about our program. First thing I want to do is thank Jacob and Shannon for all the work that they do at the fields. The fields have done a 100% turnaround on the maintenance that those guys have been doing out there, and I promise y'all, it does not go unnoticed. I try to thank Jacob at least once a week for all the work that they do, and he promises me he does pass that along to all of their crew. For y'all that don't know, Weatherford Little League was established in 1953. We are fixing to start our 68th season this spring. Weatherford Little League has produced over twenty major league baseball players over the years. I think the latest one was Bo Burrows that was drafted to the Tigers about two or three years ago, so we're super excited. My son's goal, which dream, which a lot of boys dream is to play major league baseball. I hope my son's name gets to go on that list that comes out of Weatherford Little League. He told me when he makes the majors, he will come back to Weatherford, buy some land, and he wants to support Weatherford Little League. And he told me that when he was nine years old. I mean, what nine-year-old thinks that far ahead in the future? So I'm super excited for him. We have about twenty board members on our board, and I cannot tell you the number of hours that are put into volunteering. It's all unpaid positions. No one makes any money doing this. We're just up there as advocates for the children. We have 598 players enrolled this season. I feel that is an exceptional number considering we had COVID last year. I was really nervous about what our numbers would be this year. We had 606 last season before COVID hit. I was hoping for 400 this season, and we have 598. So I don't even consider that a downsizing at all. We have fifty-six teams. That includes baseball, softball, and our challengers. Our challengers is my baby. That is our team for our special needs children. Down syndrome, autism, any kind of physical or mental capabilities that they may have, we have a special team for them to play, and our older boys and girls play them. If you haven't ever been to one of our challengers games, I highly encourage you to come to one. They're every Monday at six o'clock. You'll get to hear me up in the press box. I get up there, we dance around, we play music, we have a good time. I make fun of the other boys. They all know it's in good fun. I call them girls, Barbie dolls, and we have a fantastic time with our challengers teams. Like I said, it is my baby, and everybody knows not to mess with Tracy's challengers because Tracy's gonna put challengers before everybody else. We do have our opening ceremony this Saturday. It's gonna start at nine o'clock, and I would like you, Mr. Mayor, to please come give our invocation for us.
I'd be happy to do that.
And I would encourage every city council member to be there. You'll get to see all of our teams on the field at once. It's quite a show when we get all two hundred and, or excuse me, 598 players out there. It starts at nine o'clock, and then at 10:30, all of our board members that are present are going to play our challengers team. So that is going to be a fun time for sure for y'all to see, and no games will start before 12:30. I'm encouraging all the teams to stay and watch the challengers and cheer them on so that they can have a really big crowd to cheer them on. The more we can have our challengers cheered, the more fun that they have with it also. So, but that's really all I have.
So just to recap, it's this Saturday at nine o'clock at the fields.
Yes, sir.
And that's on Charles Street here in Weatherford.
Yes, sir.
Okay, and then followed by the first challenger game at 10:30.
Yes, sir.
Okay, that sounds great.
Yeah.
Thank you for coming and sharing the information.
Absolutely. And we will have a former MLB player there to throw out our first pitch. Have you ever heard of Blake Bevan? He was a first-round draft for the Texas Rangers in 2007, and he ended his career with the Mets in 2017. He's one of my son's coaches now, so he has agreed to come throw out our first pitch for us.
Tracy, thanks what you do for the youth in our community.
Absolutely.
Please share our thanks, share our thanks with your board.
Okay, I will. Thank you very much.
See you Saturday morning.
All right, sounds good.
All righty, five C, strong community employee highlight video, Blake Rexro. Good luck beating that energy.
Right, exactly. That's great. Blake Rexro, Director of Communications and Marketing. I come before you all again, Mayor and council members, with yet another employee highlight video, and tonight we're featuring Ms. Diana Allen, who's our Director of Human Resources, back there. I will play the video for you all now.
My name is Diana Allen. I'm the Director of Human Resources and Risk Management here at the city of Weatherford. I have been with the city for a little over eight years. My job entails helping an employee from the beginning of their career to the end of it. We deal with everything, benefits, compensation, workers' comp unfortunately, employee relations, wellness, and everything else that any employee needs. One of the great things about human resources is it's not a job or a title. It's something that I get to wake up every day and work with wonderful people and hopefully impact their lives in a positive manner. I originally grew up in Bowie, Texas, and then I went to college at UTA. I ended up marrying my high school sweetheart, my husband Eddie. We've been together for 32 years. I have one son, Clark. He's 24, and he's my hero because he has shown me, he's a cancer survivor, and he showed me strength and courage, and I'm just, I'm really proud of that, and I come and build on that, and it feeds my strength and courage to see how strong he is. One of our focuses over the past couple of years has been wellness for the employees. We have gym memberships, subsidies for employees. We have financial wellness workshops quarterly because that's important. We just are always looking at ways to expand that, to expand the employee experience. My favorite thing about working for the city is the people. If you don't have the right people around you, none of that matters, and we have tremendous leadership and tremendous workforce. I am Weatherford.
So once again, that was Ms. Diana Allen, Director of Human Resources.
Well done, Diana. Thank you.
And I'll come before you once again, one more time. We have one more video at a later date, and I'm happy to present that then. Thank you.
That'd be great. Thank you so much for that. These are very enjoyable. Item five B bouncing back up is a proclamation naming April 2021 as Sexual Assault Awareness Month in the city of Weatherford. Counsel Muntiskis is going to present this, and Counsel, let's go down with it.
I believe we have some representatives from Freedom House who are here as well, so come on up and join us as I get the opportunity to read this proclamation on behalf of the city of Weatherford. Thank you for being here today and look forward to sharing this with you. A proclamation, "The City Council of the city of Weatherford, Texas hereby proclaim April 2021 as Sexual Assault Awareness Month. Whereas in the United States, April is Sexual Assault Awareness Month, or SAM, and the goal of SAM is to raise public awareness about sexual violence and educate communities on how to prevent it, calling attention to the fact that sexual harassment, assault, and abuse are widespread and impact every person in this community, and whereas rape, sexual assault, and sexual harassment harm our community, and statistics show one in five women and one in 67 men will be raped at some point in their lives, and whereas child sexual abuse prevention must be a priority to confront the reality that one in six boys and one in four girls will experience sexual assault before age 18, and whereas on campus, one in five women and one in 16 men are sexually assaulted during their time in college, and whereas this year SAM is celebrating its 20th anniversary with the campaign theme being, we can build safe online spaces, whether they be workspaces, classrooms, or social media platforms, which are respectful and safe. Now therefore, the Weatherford City Council does hereby proclaim April 2021 as Sexual Assault Awareness Month in the city of Weatherford." And we want to present these, this proclamation to the folks from Freedom House. Join me and congratulate them.
Thank you again for being here. Thank you very much for being here.
Appreciate it.
Appreciate you.
Here at Freedom House, we are a nonprofit agency. We serve survivors and victims of both sexual assault and domestic violence. I think it's important that everybody in this room knows that if anyone ever needs to talk about their own personal experience, that our number is available online. Part of our campaign that we're working on for Sexual Assault Awareness Month is by spreading awareness and hoping to provide education and bridge that gap between maybe the taboos around sexual assault as well as, as well as maybe some misnomers when it comes to words and wording. It's our goal that people in our community can heal in the best of their abilities and that there's a safe place that people can come and talk about their experience. There are ribbons in the back, and will be teal-colored ribbons seen around Weatherford over the next month, and our hope is that if you see a ribbon, you take a ribbon and help spread that awareness that we are available to you in our communities. Thank you.
Thank you for being here. Appreciate it. Item six on the agenda, Counsel, is consent agenda items. I'm asking Counsel if we can shift item six E to hear that after item eight A, and I've already had a request to pull item six G to discuss individually. Are there any other requests for movement, Counsel? Can we entertain the rest of the body other than six E and six G as a group? Good. Any discussion on those items? Hearing none, there's a motion for approval as stated by Mayor Pro Tem Wilder, second on the floor by Jeff Robinson. Any discussion on these items before we call for a vote? It'll be all items other than six G and six E. Hearing no discussion, we'll call for a vote on these items at this time. Please indicate yea or nay. That passes. We will hear item six G at this time. Consider approval of the final renewal of the six-month contract for mowing and landscaping of city properties with WCD Enterprises LLC, including additional properties and not to exceed $201,630.98. Mr. Shannon Goodman.
Good evening, Mayor, city council members. Shannon Goodman, Director of Parks Recreation and Special Events. I'll just start with a little background on our mowing contract. In 2015, we had started discussions on the benefits of outsourcing versus hiring additional staff. At that time, our Parks, it's really our Parks and Property Division that does the mowing and the maintenance. Our Parks and Property Division was struggling to maintain the improvements and the development and the growth of our city, so it was a discussion that we had with the city manager's office about the comparison of outsourcing versus hiring additional staff. Looking at those numbers and doing comparisons, we saw that doing outsourcing would have, there was a savings of about 30% with going with outsourcing, and also you didn't have to carry a liability of additional staffing that you would carry benefits and things like that, plus additional equipment, maintenance, and cost. So as we moved forward with the outsourcing of the mowing contract, that was in 2017 that we began that mowing contract, our first contract was for $80,000. We did have two bids that year. We did choose the WCD Enterprises that year. We looked at outsourcing as it allowed us to have the benefit of a more efficient at keeping up with the maintenance of our additional parks or our park system that we have. In addition to the maintenance needs in our park system, we also have our parks crew that are tasked with set up and takedown for special events, tournaments, baseball, softball tournaments, and our first Monday. Just to kind of note, talking about a little bit of that and the changes that we've had over the years, in 2013, we hosted three special events. We hosted five softball tournaments and our annual first Monday. This year alone, we have 36 special events that we're hosting, 44 softball tournaments are on the books, and we continue to host that traditional first Monday. These type of events, as you know, have become a quality-of-life opportunity for our residents, and so it's been something that's been really important that we've been able to approve on. Things like this mowing contract and outsourcing has given us the ability to continue to grow those things, and we do still continue to have a small mowing crew that we use to take care of undeveloped properties. There's a few things such as city buildings that are still, that are not on mowing contract. There's things that we're looking at with the city manager's office in the future to how do we keep looking at being more efficient and effective, and mowing contract is one of those things that we found to be working for us. I can take any questions at this point.
Great information. Any questions for Mr. Goodman?
Yeah, thanks for, thanks for sharing that because I think, I think it's important for our citizens to hear if they just look at, you know, the bottom-line number, you know, sometimes a little explanation just helps us understand why this is such a good deal for our city and why this is a good decision. So thank you for sharing that information with us because I think, especially as someone newer to the council, helps me understand even why, why we make some of these decisions that we do, and this is an item that we budgeted for as well.
Sure.
So this is not something that we planned and prepared for.
Both the council and the citizens, we appreciate the cost savings immensely.
Right.
It's over 10%, so thank you for that.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Hearing none, we'll entertain a motion on six G if that's your pleasure. Mayor Pro Tem makes a motion for approval, second by Matt Tiscus, in discussion on six G before we call for a vote. Hearing none, we'll call for a vote at this time. Six G, yea or nay? That item passes. Item seven on the agenda is public hearings. Seven A is to hold a public hearing and consider, consider approval of ordinance O-2021-16, a request for a zone change from agricultural to SF 7.5 single-family residential for a 5.337 acre tract of land situated and being all of lots four through eight, East Lake View Edition, city of Weatherford, Parker County, Texas, ZCH 2021-0001. Welcome, Mr. Katner. Good evening.
Good evening. Mayor and Counsel, you have the complete staff report in your packet. This is a, there's two parts to this. The first is the zoning that we're hearing at this point and the public hearing that you will hold. You have that complete staff report regarding the zoning. This is zoning is to make it possible for a plat to develop 15 residential subdivision lots, meaning our SF 7.5 single-family residential zoning requirements. This did go before the Planning Commission at their March 10th meeting, and the Planning and Zoning Commission voted unanimously of all five that were present to approve the zoning change, and staff recommendation also was approval of the zoning change. As a general note, there was some discussion in regards to the drainage that was located out there, and then the engineer during the plating did discuss that, and they are required to meet the minimum requirements of drainage for the city, and we have engineering here if you have any questions for them in regards to those items if that comes up during the public hearing, but any questions for staff at this time?
We are required to have a public hearing on the item, Counsel. Do you have any questions before this hearing? Thank you, sir. This time, we'll open a public hearing on item seven A. I do have a speaker card from Mr. Chuck Stark. Mr. Stark, thanks for your patience with us. Come on up. Once you get settled, if we can have your name and address.
Okay.
If you limit your comments to three minutes, that'd be appreciated.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, my name is Chuck Stark with Bear and Stark Engineers, 6221 Southwest Boulevard, Vinbrook, 72. I am the engineer surveyor for the applicant. I've prepared the plat that y'all will be considering tonight, as well as have done the drainage analysis. I would, I'm gonna save a little time in case there's questions afterwards, but the way we've set this up from a drainage perspective is it currently exists approximately 14, 15 acres flow across East Lake Drive, across the lake lease lots into the lake. There is minimal underground drainage. There's a single culvert, but it just discharges out into the lot. Our proposal is that we will collect water on the east side of East Lake Drive, put it into a conduit system, extend it through one of the lake lots directly to the lake. So I think we will actually decrease the drainage load on the lake, the lease lots immediately across the street from this project. So I actually think it will help the overall drainage situation in that specific area. It's very similar to what we did in Lake Hills Edition on the other side of the lake, and that has worked out very well for us. Unless you have any questions, I would save maybe some time in case there's some audience members that have some questions.
Any questions for Mr. Stark?
I have one.
Mayor Pro Tem.
What is the drainage feat that it is from the property development to getting it diverted to the lake? So how far is that from the property development to?
The lease lots are around 150 deep, 150 feet deep from East Lake Drive. We would have curb inlets on our new street, the cul-de-sac that we were proposing, as well as great inlets in the ditch along East Lake Drive. We would combine those together in a single system and extend it straight through to the lake. There's about a four-foot, four-to-five-foot deep or high concrete wall at the water's edge. We would penetrate that with this pipe. I anticipate it to be a 30-inch and, you know, seal it all up, and so the water wouldn't hit the lease lots at all.
Okay.
Any other questions or anything for Mr. Stark? Thank you for coming forward tonight and your willingness to answer the question, sir. Anybody else on item seven A? We are have a public hearing open. Seven A.
Yes, that's a plenary plat, but that's a later item. So you could speak, you could speak to that particular development under.
Would you like to speak specific to this item?
No, we'll wait for the six.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Someone's heard it.
Good. Okay, at this time, we're gonna close the public hearing on seven A. Counsel, any questions for staff or discussion among ourselves?
I have one question.
Mayor Pro Tem.
Actually, a couple more questions, and it's Bill, if Bill could come up. My concern here is that what you're talking about is we're, those plats are in a, in a place that are now city, zone city. However, beside them are county residents, and county residents don't follow the same guidelines that city residents do. And my concern is with that many lots, you're going to be displacing a abundance of water, and I don't know how you're gonna get it to the lake, but it, because it is extremely crowded on East Lake Drive at that point, and if you're putting a cul-de-sac, that's gonna displace water only one way. I know you think that there's a ridge, and I've read the packet, and maybe I'm just clueless, but I know that you think you're gonna displace water both directions, but the fact remains you've got a lot of now what is impervious situation creating additional water, including not account, I don't think our regulations account for the fact that you expect everyone to follow the same drainage situation, but the county doesn't have to follow those requirements. So the concern is you're putting water from Arrow Point, and county residents are displacing water through Arrow Point. You've, because you're putting an impervious situation there in a cul-de-sac in the summer, it flows, and it's gonna flow right on those lake residents, one, and if, if it doesn't flow on those lake residents, it's gonna flow on the county residents that are to the right, and they don't have to, they don't have to follow the same regulations. So anything that the county, I mean, the county can create the same situation we have a little further down on the lake where we've annexed, but the county didn't have to follow those regulations, so they displaced all their water onto what our new residents are, and those new residents now displaced all their water onto the lake residents, and we're having to spend a substantial amount of money to try to correct that situation for our citizens.
Yep, so sure. I guess, I'm Nick Benson. I'm here for Bill Smith, who couldn't be here.
Thank you for being here. Appreciate it.
I work in the engineering department with him. So I guess to address your concerns, it's a benefit to annex this property into the city because then we can oversee their drainage plans as opposed to being in the county. Like you said, they, they may have lesser restrictions, but they are required to account for anything that's off-site and upstream of them and to account for that to be fully developed. I'm not sure what the general plan calls for in that area, but all that water that comes onto them, which I believe is minimal in talking with their project engineer due to the location of just the high point upstream of them, but everything that does come onto them, they have to account for and take that into their system, and it'll go underground. It'll collect basically all of their home area, all of their street area, underground and straight to the lake. I guess if I, is that addressing your question or?
Sort of. I mean, I, we say this a lot, and maybe it's something I need to ask for a future agenda item to really look at our drainage, maybe expanding our drainage criteria, but my real concern is the fact that we, we've seen this historically become a problem for us as we annex, voluntarily annex, because I will tell you, there is going to be to the opposite east side of them, there will be, there is, they've already laid the groundwork for another plat, and, and I realize, you know, that's why I asked how far it was going to be from one point to the other point, because all along there, you're talking about citizens who live there. It's not just, you know, we've seen citizens have to overcome the displacement of water because the county doesn't have regulations, and they've shoved their water onto us, and now our citizens are having, you know, they develop up above, and now our citizens are having to tolerate all this displacement of water, and it just, I have a real hard time with, with this. I really do. 16 houses with a cul-de-sac, which means the cul-de-sac is not, it's not going to, it doesn't have two flows out of it, so it disperses it a little. It's gonna be really basically one flow out of it to a drainage. I get that, but I just, I don't see that working very well.
Yep, I'm trying to, I guess, answer your questions, so maybe.
And we certainly, I think Mr. Stark would probably be willing to come back up too. If, once you're done with staff questions, Mayor Pro Tem, just so we, we give the applicant an opportunity to try to address this too. I think it'd be a good thing, but, sir, go ahead.
Basically, just trying to say that, yeah, everything, and Chuck may be able to verify this, but it sounds like there's not that much upstream as far as what's in the county. I think if I'm understanding your concern correctly, that there may be development in the county later on, and that increased runoff is gonna come into the city, onto this property, and then go across the lake, but all that's gonna have to be accounted for since it's upstream of this property in their drainage system and in their drainage calculations. That, I believe that area is relatively small just based That, I believe that area is relatively small just based on where the high point is in that area, but is that kind of getting to what you're?
I'm worried about the residents too that are, are going to have to, are downstream from that.
Mr. Shaffer?
Quick, Shaffer, Water Utilities, I want to add something to that. One of the advantages of having annexed this property is that they do come through our process and so that we do get to review their design and make sure that they've accounted for this. I think some of the other issues that you're alluding to were situations where there was development in the county or outside of our city limits that we did not have control over and we did not have a project in place to, to account for that. In this situation, we actually have a developer who is wanting to come in and will install the drainage system to resolve this drainage issue for us instead of some of the other cases where the city may have had to build and construct a drainage system ourselves.
Mayor Protem, does that answer your questions?
That does. I'm just concerned about that.
Okay. Do you need to hear from Mr. Stark or anything, questions for the engineer or are we okay?
No, I'm good.
Okay, great.
Thank you.
Council members, any other questions or comments on this item? Okay. All right. The public hearing has been closed. We've had an opportunity for discussion on item 7A. Council, if it's your pleasure, we can proceed. There's a motion on the floor for approval by Jeff Robinson and a second by Matt Tiscus. Final opportunity for discussion or comments on the item? Hearing done, we'll call for vote on 7A at this time. Please indicate yea or nay on 7A. That passes 3 to 1. 7B, the applicant has withdrawn their request for rezoning of this property. That can be noted. 7C is to hold a public hearing and consider approval of ordinance O 2021-14, reviewing a conditional use permit for possible revocation in the C1 Commercial Zoning District at 711 Palopinto Street, being a 1.792 acre tract of land out of the James VC Survey, abstract number 1585, City of Weatherford, Parker County, Texas, ZCH 2018-0013. Mr. Kettner, welcome back, sir.
Mayor, council, you have in your packet a complete staff report in regards to this, this action that's before you in regards to review of a conditional use permit. And just, I know you have that in your packet, but just for the education of the citizens of what action is being requested before you. This action did go before the Planning and Zoning Commission at their, at their March 10th meeting with a recommendation, unanimous recommendation of to revoke the conditional use permit that was issued back in August of 2018. This also came with a recommendation from staff with above findings that are listed in your staff reports regarding Texas Classics and Customs located at 711 Palopinto Street that has not met the conditions of approval and therefore we make the recommendation of revocation with the effective date of 30 days from the revocation order from the city council. As you have in your staff report, this, this was issued, the conditional use permit was issued in August 14th of 2018 and as of December 21st, 2020, compliance had not yet been met. Planning staff, code enforcement staff have been working with the applicants to get them to come into compliance over these last couple, two years. And at this point, no satisfactory compliance was made to the conditions that were approved by the council and the planning commission at that time. And therefore, it's being brought before you at this time for your consideration based on the findings that are outlined in the staff report and that these items have not been, been met. When we started this process, we also wanted to confirm that staff was interpreting the regulations correctly that were ordered, requested by the planning commission and council. And the board of adjustment did find that staff was interpreting the conditions that were placed on it correctly and that they should be enforced as outlined in the conditional use permit. And therefore, staff continued to proceed with this action as it did go at the March 10th meeting to the planning commission and their recommendation was to revoke the conditional use permit. And the applicants are here in regards to this as well, but as, as an action of a zoning, it does require a public hearing.
Absolutely, yes, sir. Any questions for Mr. Kettner before we have our public hearing on item 7C? Thank you, sir. This time we'll open up a public hearing on item 7C. If there's anybody that'd like to speak specifically on this item, please raise your hand, come forward this time, 7C. Yes, sir. Come on up. Thanks for your patience with us. Once you get settled up here, if we can have your name and address and you'll have three minutes, okay?
Yes, sir.
You have the timer right back here.
My name is Lauren Saban. I reside at 104 Lakeview Court, Weatherford, Texas. And our business is at the 711 Palopinto. I understand what the purpose of this meeting is tonight and I acknowledge that we haven't been able to acquire full compliance as of yet, but I'd like to bring your attention to some contributing factors that we've dealt with. It was our understanding when we got the conditional use permit that there was gonna be extensive remodels, renovations, new buildings, fences, all of this. And we had discussed with Sam, with Stan at that time, who, that we were going to be on a two to five year plan to get all this accomplished. As, as you all well know, last year with COVID, COVID about killed us. I mean, it, it killed hundreds of thousands of small businesses all across America. And not only did it deplete our funds, but at the same time, it made it hard to hire contractors, it made it hard to hire all of us. We filed paperwork with the city and the paperwork was declined. It wasn't in the proper format or wasn't of the proper stature. I've, I've tried to hire several contractors and after reviewing our situation, they all said, we'll check with the city, we'll overlook your plans and we'll get back to you. All of their responses were the same. And I, I do have notations of what contracting companies I've tried to hire. I did find a contracting company in Granbury who is in the process of doing the engineering report and doing the new architecture plans to make sure they're to code and specifications and whatnot. The, the main reason we haven't been able to come to compliance is just a matter of money. It, we're a small business, we struggle. We've been notified that we can't have cars parked out front and I, I do understand that. I was under the, under, under the understanding we wouldn't have for sale cars parked out front. We are an automotive repair facility as well. We, we repair classic and custom cars. We have customers' cars and they park them out front. Now, as far as the greenery and shrubbery, it's a pretty tall order to get all this done. We had a couple of companies close on us that we contracted to do it. The boxes were done at one time, they weren't done correctly. They're in the process right now of being redone. We will make compliance. I, I just, I request some more time to get this done. I think it's pretty tough to expect a business to come up with this kind of funding in the middle of a global pandemic where you can't even get, you can't get small business loans, paycheck protection program, nothing. And for a small guy like us, there just isn't any help out there.
Okay. Your last name was Saban?
Saban, S-A-B-I-N.
Okay, okay. Mr. Saban, we appreciate you coming forward tonight. We may have possibly have some questions. Is there any questions for the applicant here?
I mean, we have made substantial improvements.
Your three minutes is up. I'm, I'm gonna respond to a couple of things that you said because I sat on the Planning and Zoning Commission that, that heard that case.
Yes, sir.
The items that were required of you were specifically listed and discussed in this meeting and I will assure you that a three to five year time period was never discussed. And so the requirements were specifically discussed with you and that is the only occasion that I remember a conditional use permit being given time past the point of opening. At that time, it was, you were given that because of economic challenges and I understand that. I think all businesses have that. You had plenty of time and plenty of opportunity pre-COVID to take care of these conditions. As a matter of fact, they should have been required to be done before you were granted a certificate of occupancy. So I understand you've had challenges. I think all small business does, but the same reasons that you say you need more time now are the precise same reasons that you shared over two years ago right this time. So any other questions or comments for this gentleman? Thank you for being here, sir. On top of that, when we do these things as a council, we want to work with small businesses in Weatherford, but we also have a responsibility to the other small businesses in that area that work hard to maintain their properties and keep them up. And I received multiple phone calls after we granted this extension by, in that, in that, at that timeframe and neighboring businesses were uncomfortable with that. And so this is a very difficult situation. We certainly can have a discussion on that, but I chaired that committee during that period of time and recognize that we probably should have asked more questions at that time and set some stricter criteria. Comments?
I think we have to be consistent and we need to, all of our small businesses and all of our citizens require us to be consistent as hard as it is for us to do.
It's terribly difficult. It is terribly difficult. Or then is there anybody else that'd like to speak on 7C specifically? Considering there's nobody else, we'll close the public hearing at this time. Any other comments or questions, council? Mr. Kettner, can you come back up just for a moment? Just to confirm, this has already gone through, can you restate one more time the two public boards and commissions before it came to council and they have recommended?
Yes, that is correct. This went before the planning commission meeting at the 10th. We took the, the conditions that were placed at the planning commission and approved by the council at that time. There were 10 conditions that were placed and as, as you stated, there were, you have the copies of the minutes that were in your packets. There was no discussion over timelines on that and that's what we worked, tried to work with the applicants to get those taken care of and, and we're still haven't reached that at this time. So we, we took that to the Board of Zoning Adjustment to make, ensure that staff was interpreting correctly what the, what the planning commission and the council requested for the conditions and they concurred that we were interpreting it exactly the way that they, that the, the planning commission or the, and the council approved it with the conditions that were placed on it to come into compliance.
Have, have any of the conditions been met?
There have been efforts to, to make some of these, meet some of these. For example, the fence permit, we've worked with them multiple times. The fence permit has expired again and the fence is not complete. The landscaping hasn't been completed. Those seven items that are listed in your, in the staff findings are still as they are today. They have made progress on landscaping in the front and fixing those items, but it hasn't reached the compliance level that was required for the conditional use permit.
And the original date of approval of the CUP with conditions, can you remind us of that one more time?
Yes, the original date of that approval was August 14th of 2018.
So over two years.
Yes.
Okay. Great questions, council. Any others, comments? Mr. Robinson?
I'm good.
Thank you, Mr. Kettner. And if I've closed the public hearing correct? Council, the item is open for discussion, for action, consideration.
I'm gonna go with staff's recommendation of repeal and revocation with an effective date of 30 days from revocation order from the city council.
Motion by the Mayor Protem, as stated, is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Jeff Robinson. Any discussion on 7C before we call for a vote?
Is there any opportunity for them to, if they met certain things within that window that they, that this would not be carried through?
Mr. Kettner, can you address that please, sir? It's a great question.
It would be my understanding, based on the conditional use that's approved, they would need to meet all of those criteria before that 30 days was up in order for them to meet that criteria.
Any other questions, Mr. Tiscus?
No, it's just, you know, I hear what you're saying and I, I hear what the Mayor Protem is saying. This is, this is, this is difficult. It's hard.
Super difficult.
Absolutely.
To, to, to process this because my heart goes out to a small business owner in our, in our community who's, who's working to provide for, provide for his family. And so that is a, this is, this is just really hard.
I don't think anybody's debating that at all. This is, this is a very difficult decision and it has been for the prior two commissions that heard this case. And it was a difficult situation in 2018 to make the decision to grant the extension. We did that because of economic hardship, because it was a new business, because they were gonna provide a first-class restoration business and it was specifically stated, all the things in the, the conditional use permit. It was difficult then, it's still difficult now. Point taken. Other comments, 7C? Some motion and a second on the floor if there's no more discussion, which we're happy to have, we'll call for a vote if there's no other discussion. 7C, we'll call for a vote at this time. Motion passes 3 to 1. Eight, item eight, regular agenda items. 8A has been, the applicant has requested that this be withdrawn, this preliminary plat. And now we come to 6E. I'm making sure I get all these shifts right. Let me go back up to 6E. 6E is considered a request for a preliminary plat for 15 residential lots to the Arrow Point subdivision, being 5.337 acre tract of land situated and being all of lots four through eight, Eastview Lake Edition, City of Weatherford, Parker County, Texas, SBD 2021-0011. Welcome back.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. You have in your packets the, the complete staff report in regards to this preliminary plat request. This is, follows along with what the action you've just taken earlier in the meeting in regard to the zoning. This is to do a preliminary plat for 15 residential lots in two phases. And this went before the planning commission at their March 10th meeting and the Planning and Zoning Commission recommended approval, five, with all representatives present unanimously to approve the preliminary plat with the staff recommended conditions, items one through five in your packet. If you have any questions, we'd be glad to answer.
Any questions for Mr. Kettner? We do have two speaker cards on the item. Go ahead with the speakers, is that okay, council? Mr. Kettner, we're gonna call Teddy Berry. Hi there. Thanks for your patience with us tonight. Once you get settled, if we can have your address and then we'll give you three minutes, okay?
Okay.
Thanks for being here.
My name is Teddy Berry. I live at 1910 Lake Drive in Weatherford. My family arrived in Weatherford in 1874 on a covered wagon from Missouri and own, and I own the last three acres of what was the family farm run by my grandfather, Norman Preacher Wood. I'm not anti-development, but I do believe that this area was not intended to have housing developments with four bedrooms, three-bass, two-story homes on .2 or .3 acres. Sure, the lakeside cottages were planned to be on small plots, summer cottages enjoyed by families who then left their full-time homes after Labor Day. This new development from David Wilson, however, is not on the lakeside and 15 houses on five acres should not be allowed to move forward. The lake area is already incredibly busy, overtrafficked, dangerous to pedestrians and cyclists, the speed controls haven't worked and that's on a regular weekday. Then you add in the weekend and summer traffic and the lake roads are very overcrowded, bordering on dangerous. Now what will happen when you add in 15 more houses? 60 or more people based on a four, family of four, 30 more kids at Mary Martin and my daughter already has over 20 in her class, 60 more cars on the narrow country roads, many of which don't have a center line, 15 more houses that will be using already limited resources, including water. But the real issue is far more critical than 15 houses planned on five acres. Approving this development will be the precedent this developer needs for his next project on Regal and White Settlement Road. The development is 94 acres. If the council allows for 15 acres on five, I'm sorry, 15 houses on five acres, that means that this developer could be allowed to develop 284 homes and that's 94 acres divided by .33 acres to get 284 homes. And that's 94 acres divided by point 33 acres to get 284 homes. Now what will happen when you add 284 homes to this area? That's another 1,100 plus people based on a family of four, over 500 more people at Mary Martin and Tyson and Weatherford High School, over 1,100 more cars potentially, and 284 more houses that will already be using limited resources, including water. We haven't even discussed the stress on other resources, including police and fire, environment. There's bald eagles, egrets, herons, silver foxes. Kites are all native to this area. There's sewer, power, and trash.
Please wrap up, please.
Okay.
Thank you.
And with these precedents set, we will happen, what will happen in the next ranch property is sold.
Thank you for being here. Your comments are well constructed and thought out. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
We do have one other speaker card. Rand?
Yes.
Okay, I'm sorry. I've got bad eyes, bad ears and everything else. So thank you so much.
My mother, my mother is striking me down right now for bad handwriting.
Is it Rand?
Rand, yeah. Thank you.
Paul, thanks for being here. If we can have your name and address and then we'll give you three minutes, okay?
Thank you. It's Rand Otten and I also live at 1910 East Lake Drive. My comments today, and I'm happy to give them to you, Mr. Mayor, are from our neighbor who is working this evening and was unable to be here. His name is Ian Alexander and he lives at 1932 East Lake Drive in Weatherford, Texas. So would you like me to give you his letter for you to read or would you like me to read it for you?
You'd be happy to read it publicly.
Okay, thank you. Again, this is Ian Alexander.
Be where you do the timeline with that, please.
Yep, Ian Alexander, 1932 East Lake Drive. Dear City Council members, I moved here 21 years ago to find a bit of peace and quiet. I am not opposed to progress and new developments as Weatherford is growing into a prosperous community. And I applaud the council for the vastly improved First Monday area and the development of outdoor theater, dog parks, and the road project through the city, center of the city. I am sure that when like, the lake area was first developed, it wasn't intended to become enveloped by housing developments such as the one proposed. On the other side of the lake, this developer has taken care to develop the area with nice wide roads and adequate-sized lots. Why has that not way, why has that way of thinking not been used on this side of the road? This will lead to more noise, light pollution, and I do believe that 10 lots would be more considerate for this particular neighborhood instead of just jacking up the price of properties and the lots. You are setting a precedent by allowing so many houses to be in a relatively small area that the same developer is also working towards a 90-acre development nearby. So if that's allowed to go through, so will the future development and so will cluster housing. None of you on the council will be affected by this project except by adding more revenue to aid growth with higher property taxes. I understand that part. You have been, you have probably heard the usual arguments before from other property owners in and around other housing developments. Have adequate studies been done on extra stormwater runoff and the planned infrastructure where the other drains will go? What route will the construction traffic take to this new development? Are the new properties on East Lake Drive within the FEMA 100-year flood zone? And if so, are there any restrictions? What codes are attached to housing developments in such areas? As caretakers of our city and in this direction you want to take this lake community to go, I am so saddened by your decision as this area will lose its identity. I have been to a couple of your planning and development meetings and was impressed at some of the collective decisions that have been made, but I think you have gone the wrong direction on this one. I implore you to reconsider the amount of houses to be built here. I am not against development as big as Texas is, but why smoosh houses together? Why does money have to be made? Why does money have to be the incentive every time? Regards, Ian Alexander.
You did great. You did a great job. You got stuck in the time. You're a great neighbor for helping him out, so.
Thank you.
Rand, thank you for being here. Appreciate it. Thank you so much. Those are the only two cards that we have on item 6E. Is there any discussion, counsel?
I do want to, I, I am really, really concerned about the drainage. You, you don't think about it on a normal year when there's normal water coming, but on a year when you have a tremendous amount of rain, and there have been quite a few of those years in the last 30 years I've lived here. I just don't think that we're, we're adequately planning for those kind of events. They're out of the ordinary, surely. But I think that we need to take more accountability, given the fact that we have county residents we need to be concerned about on both sides of this subdivision. And I agree, that's too many houses for what I see in the drainage plans. And again, I'm not an engineer. I'm just looking at this from an individual perspective, so.
And you care.
I really care about.
That's what we're here to do, is talk about people's comments and their thoughts. And so we're glad you're sharing those thoughts. Are there, are there any other thoughts or questions on the item? Or any questions for staff?
But when, when the engineers speak to the issue, though, does that not answer your, what do you, I mean, how are they not answering your question, I guess, is what I'm trying to figure out?
I've seen what we've had to do on several other occasions. I've been here so long that I have seen us have to go back in and correct because we didn't truly think about the fact that, one, the county does not have to, to build to regulations. So if they put a house one way or they move dirt one way, I've seen that happen on many, many occasions. And Lake Weatherford only has one way to go. When you're up above and the lake residents are down below, it only has one way to go. I, I really am uncomfortable with this.
I understand. Questions or comments on 6E? Um, there's, this is not a public hearing item and I don't have a speaker card, ma'am. So we're going to keep, keep the discussion among council. Thank you. Counsel, comments, questions? Okay. All righty, 6E, if it's your pleasure, we consider action on it. There's a motion for approval that's presented by Jeff Robinson. Is there a second on 6E? Matt Tiscus provides a second. Counsel, any further discussion on 6E before we call for a vote? Hearing none, we'll call for a vote on 6E at this time. Please indicate yea or nay at your convenience. Passes 3-1. Item nine on the agenda, the staff reports 9A, is an update regarding the progress of the downtown bypass project. Mr. Terry Hughes?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, Terry Hughes, Director of Capital Projects. And let me see if I can get our slides. Again, you're very familiar with the bypass program. This is just an alignment showing what we refer to as three phases of the project, the north bypass, the south bypass, and then ultimately whatever it happens to the Heritage Square area. This is the timeline we're working from. And I kind of want to give you that quarterly update on that. The last report I gave you was early in January. In January, we issued a request for qualifications for the bypass project, those qualifications being for a consulting team to help us with the design, environmental and all of the elements connected with the final project. While those were being run, which normally are run through newspaper ads and we use a system called Civicast, which is an online system to solicit those RFQs, what we refer to as RFQs. While that was being done, we developed a seven-person review selection team. That team was made up with Chad Marbit, our Capital Projects Engineer, Bill Smith, our city engineer, Nicholas Benson, who you just got introduced to, our utility engineer, Don Brooks, our Assistant Finance Director, Matt Lipla, our Transportation Public Works Operations Manager, and Jared Pearson, our Chairperson of the Transportation Advisory Board. We closed the RFQs in February, on February 12th. We received five respondents to the RFQs. The selection team reduced that five to four where they would do further in-depth interviews, person interviews. I think some of you have actually sat on an interview team in the past with us on those. That was held in early March, the second week in March. And while all of those firms brought a high degree of professionalism to the project, the selection team thought that one team brought a multidisciplined cohesion and some recent involvement on a similar project to, to meet Weatherford's needs. That team is Kimberly Horn. We have contacted all the firms, let Kimberly Horn know that we, they were selected. We are in the process of developing a contract. That contract should be back in front of you pending text dot approval in the second meeting in April. That means we will start survey work for our schematic in May, on May 25th of 2020, which was our target date. Those, as we move forward, that's, that's where we're going. Just some upcoming items, if I might. Our consulting contract in April, surveys start in May. That's when we move into our schematic design and our environmental process. Again, we're looking in an extended period of time. We're going to guess at this point 12 months. That could go longer depending on exactly how the environmental works, but this is where we're at at this point.
Great. Appreciate that update. Any questions for Mr. Hughes on the project? Thank you so much for this and we'll see you in a quarter?
Yes, sir.
Okay, great. We look forward to it. Thank you so much. Mr. Robinson, did you have a question? Okay, just want to make sure I don't get going too fast here. Item 10 on the agenda, counsel, is future agenda items, anybody?
Yep.
Mayor Pro Tem?
Maybe after the election in June, could we have a workshop on drainage? And just looking at our criteria, we are growing so fast and I would like to review our drainage criteria with the understanding of the growth that we're expecting and how it's expanding out into voluntary annexation as well.
Correct suggestion and it's probably a really good time to look at that. Good point. So we'll look for a work session on that on June?
In June.
Is that okay with you? Okay, great. Mr. O'Toole, top, you okay with that?
Certainly.
All righty, any future agenda items? That's a great one. Anybody else? We'll move to item 11, citizen comments on non-agenda items. Is there anybody that would like to make a comment on an item that was not on our agenda this evening? Anybody? You can come forward, yes, ma'am. Thank you for your patience with us. And the reason I want to.
I've been here before, so.
You know what? I'm glad you're here. And the reason I wanted you to come forward is because people are watching online and we need to record it for the record. So can you, can we have your name and address?
My name is Tina Loge. I live at 96 North Lake Drive, Weatherford.
And welcome to your first council meeting.
Well, thank you. One, I was opposing the 15 housing thing. Thank you, Heidi. I appreciate what you do. It's Loge, L O G E, I'm sorry. I was out wondering about the roads. When y'all do all the construction that y'all are doing, they're on North Lake. They have torn up our road. And they explained to me, since we're county, we're not covered by city taxes to fix our roads. When you drive down my road, if you have any kind of back issue, it's going to get worse because it's up there. And so that was what was explained to me.
Right.
So I think if y'all are doing all the construction that you're doing and going down our road to go do it, then the city needs to fix our road.
Yes, ma'am.
So that's a future item.
I appreciate you sharing that and we're glad you came forward to share your thoughts. That's what we're here for. And so thank you for coming forward tonight.
Appreciate it.
And we'll see you at your second council meeting really soon, okay?
I hope so. Let's not have any more houses.
All right, thank you. Is there anybody else? Yes, ma'am.
This is also my first time.
Well, that's great. If you'll come on up and let us have your name and address. Welcome to your first council meeting.
I'm La Gina Adair. I live on 100 Fox Point Circle.
Yes, ma'am.
I would like clarification. I would like to know, is with y'all's downtown, are y'all actually blocking off vehicle traffic around the circle? With this new, whatever you're doing down here?
Are we blocking off traffic around the downtown circle?
With this?
No.
Okay, that's what I want clarification on. Are we going to be able to drive around the historic courthouse?
We'll be able to, yes.
Okay. I wanted clarification on that.
Yeah. And that's what we're here for. So we're glad you came forward to get it.
By this, by the rendering I got last night, it looked like that you were not going to be able to drive around the circle. And I just wanted clarification that we are still going to be able to drive around the courthouse.
You will be able to drive around the courthouse, yeah. Everything on Facebook's not accurate, so.
Okay, thank you.
It's not. Thank you for coming forward, ma'am. And we'll see you at your second meeting real soon. Do we have one other on non-agenda items, sir? Something we have not already discussed this evening? Okay, come on forward. You know what? But we look forward to your seventh too. So once you get settled, can we have your name and address?
Robert Kretzinger, 111 West Josephine.
Put me in your address again, Robert, 111?
West Josephine.
Okay, thank you, Robert.
Everybody that knows me, I started Operation Texas Strong 2021 for homeless veterans. And I, my goal is to get homeless veterans and homeless people